All right. Thank you for joining us this evening for the March ninth, twenty twenty three, Montessorino Better Streets Commission Special Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist our commissioners, staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with this Better Streets Commission Special Meeting. For those of you using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hands. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a commissioner speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the chair and unable to speak to the commissioners. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot be, cannot provide feedback or public comment. Unless when we are not all in the same room, all those in this meeting must be taken by roll call. All right. Montessorino is now called to order. And we will take roll call, please. Thank you. Natalia, Sarah, Sarah, four, missing one, sorry. Barry Shaven.
Here.
Bob, we have, we have.
Here.
And Chair, this is all our present. All right. First of all, before I, before we move to the consent calendar, I want to announce that we do have a city council member here. Our Vice Mayor, Ava Wolshimer, has been appointed as the alternate liaison to the commission. So he is here in attendance tonight. So welcome, Vice Mayor. All right. Thank you. Moving on to consent calendar. Are there any questions? If we can allow the Vice Mayor to make his team.
Oh my gosh, of course. Sorry. Yeah, I need to make, according to our city lawyer, I had to make a statement why I will not be attending in person. This is a bunch of legalese, but I will not be attending in person for just cause. According to government code five, four, nine, five, three, paragraph F, also paragraph J, section two, a contagious illness that prevents a member from attending in person. To be more specific, I was exposed to somebody who tested positive for COVID over the weekend. So far, I've tested negative, but I didn't want to risk exposing more people tonight. So that's why I'm attending by Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, are there any questions regarding the consent calendar, or do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Great. Roll call, please. Yes, Natalia. Chair, yes. Barry.
Yes.
And Bob.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business, continuation of the discussion on the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, also known as the BDMP. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Lawler and Commissioners. Thank you for your courage coming out on an evening like this. To begin, I would like to introduce the staff of KTUA Planning and Landscape Architecture, who are joining us in tonight's meeting by way of Zoom. Tonight, we have Joe, I'll butcher this Joe, Unsull, a principal, and Alex Samrin, an associate. The gentlemen have been with the project effort from its beginning. And they are here this evening principally to answer any questions, record any comments that the commission may have. Joe or Alex, do you wish to have an opening remark?
Just wanted to thank everybody for the opportunity to work in Montessorino. We are a San Diego based firm, but the ability to, since COVID, you know, work remotely and the opportunity to work in Montessorino has been, has been a pleasure. So we want to just thank you guys for the opportunity. And hopefully we can answer some of the questions that you guys have tonight for us. Unfortunately, you know, with, we did have our engineer, Tom Bertullis, was supposed to attend, but he too has, but he actually has contracted COVID and is really sick. So he's not able to attend tonight. So any, we'll try to do our best to answer any engineering related questions, but we might have to refer, follow up with some, some responses if they're, if they're too detailed on the engineering side of things. So apologize for him not being able to make it back in this day and age. It's one of those things that we have to, kind of have to live with nowadays.
Thank you, Joe. The introduction I would like to make, it really is a recap, brief recap of the history of your project. Since not all of you were, were involved with the commission at the beginning. The, some joined at the picnic, I think Commissioner Natalia joined at the picnic officially. The effort to, to prepare a bicycle and pedestrian master plan was scoped in the late twenty twenty one. After executing the KTUA agreement in late December, KTUA was commissioned to prepare the master plan with a goal for council adoption by the end of twenty twenty two. Work was begun in January. The master plan was seen as an important tool for assessing and prioritizing city projects, allocation of city funds, and importantly, for the support of grant applications for the improvement of bicycle and pedestrian facilities within the city. KTUA conducted research, data gathering, and other activities, including beginning a public outreach program, culminating with a participation at the city picnic in August of twenty twenty two. Following that event, KTUA prepared the draft master plan, which was received in early October and agendized for the commission's October thirteenth, twenty twenty two meeting. The commission at that meeting accepted the draft report and then scheduled a meeting for further discussion on October twenty fifth. The commission held that special meeting on the twenty fifth and discussed the report. After discussion, the commission determined to have a subcommittee made up of Commissioner Doreen Nelson and Vice Chair, at the time Chair Barry Chaven, to develop specific comments and recommendations relative to the initial draft and to return with those at the December regular commission meeting. The subcommittee did develop its recommendations for changing, modifying the draft master plan. Those were presented at the, to, to the commission at its December eighth meeting. At that meeting, commission approved the comments and recommendations for changes to the October draft. Commission also agreed that the December thirty fourth, thirty first target for completion was less important than getting the master plan done properly. Following the commission's December meeting, the city and KTUA negotiated a fee for additional service and time extension for the KTUA agreement. In January, then KTUA was authorized and did proceed with modifications as recommended by the commission. The revised report then was received from KTUA on February sixth. Pardon me. And was presented to the commission at its February ninth meeting. At that meeting, as the commission is aware, you agreed to hold a special meeting tonight on March ninth to discuss the revised draft and develop further its recommendations to the city council. That completes my introductory comments. Thank you. Happy to take any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rimbly. So why don't we do this? I thought, since both of you have been part of this process for quite some time, I thought I'd, in an orderly fashion, start with questions and comments from both of you. And then Natalia. And then, and then I'll finish up. So if you would like to go ahead and, and do you have any questions or comments?
This point?
No.
Okay.
So first of all, I'd like to thank KTUA for implementing the core of our suggestions, and I think they did a good job of doing that. One of my major goals is to make sure all the potential pedestrian routes or bike routes, whether we have a specific project for them or not, were highlighted on some map. And that's because there's ever an opportunity down the road for funding that's not on your plan, it makes it a lot harder to get funded. And so I think figures four one and four two do a very good job of that. I do have a handful of detailed comments on that. I don't know if we want to get into detailed comments right now, but.
I would say we're here. That's what we're here for.
Okay. All right. Well, starting actually at one comment even earlier is figure one dash three, which shows East Vineland as a through street to university, if I'm not mistaken. I'm going by my notes and not looking at it. And I don't think that's correct.
That is correct. It does not go through my eye.
I didn't, I looked at it on Skyview, but I didn't remember it. So that, that's a minor thing that should be fixed. I don't know if that's because it should have been El Rancho, but I doubt it. So that's just a minor thing. And then should we leave on figure four dot, four dash one, should El Rancho be left on there? It's kind of a question to the fellow commissioners and even city staff. We know we can't legally go through there now, but it's a great opportunity in the future. And so I think we should consider leaving it, putting it on the map as a potential pathway. Pedestrian pathway, that's in figure four dash one. Another comment is should Bruce be on there? Because I know that's a road widely used by kids going to the elementary school there. So that's something, I guess the commissioners should, should think about, but it seems to me that it should be on there.
Would, would that be Poppy going through Bruce's retirement?
No, I meant, I literally meant Bruce. You didn't. But that's an interesting question, because the retirement community is a place where there's lots of kids going, but it's, it's a little bit like El Rancho, except we're actually taking advantage of the property in this space. So that is just something I'd, I'd like to think about. And then moving on to bike, first of all, I'd like to ask KTUA about the term advisory bike lane. I'm involved in seeing a lot of bicycle infrastructure proposals throughout the Bay Area, and that's just not a term I see in the Bay Area, advisory bike lane. Maybe it's a Southern California term. But is that, do you guys have any comment on, on the use of that term?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks for your comments. I might have some follow up questions. And advisory bike lanes are something that I wish Tom were here to speak on because he sits on an advisory board to a national committee for getting advisory bike lanes recognized for like a standard improvement. So he's very involved in, in the terminology, the specifications of, of that specific type of infrastructure. They are not common, but that's kind of the goal of the group of, that this, that our engineers are part of. They, they look for the newest and greatest, the safety benefits that these new infrastructure bring. So they are not common in the U.S. They are common in Europe. Another name for them is edge lane road. So edge lane road and advisory bike lane are the same thing. And I think, I think the term edge lane road gets more at their contextual use because it's actually a rural edge lane road. It's well in rural contexts where roads are narrow, speeds and vol, and vehicle volumes are low. And you might need recognized connections for pedestrians and bicycles. So in effect, what it does is gives shoulder space via a dotted line on either side of the road for pedestrians and bicycles, narrows the vehicle lane to what is essentially one lane that accommodates two directions of traffic, but it's as if you were driving on a neighborhood road with parking on both sides. When, when you encounter another car, you slow and move to the side and one passes than the other. And it, and the idea is that the volume's so low, this, these movements are allowed and, you know, there's, and there's visibility for bikes and pedestrians as well. And I'd like to add, there's a recent, supporting this, this move to make them more widely accepted. There's research out of San Jose State University. Actually, there's a transportation institute there that found something like a forty eight percent, forty six or forty eight percent increase in safety in in terms of the reduction of collisions when, in situations where advisory bike lanes were implemented.
And just, just to add on to Alex's explanation, is a lot of the advisory bike lanes, when we are recommending them, is when there's not enough space right away with to install a standard bike lane. That's why the dash lane kind of, you know, you can still drive over a dash, a dash line. It provides another, essentially provides a lane for a cyclist to be able to ride in just through that segment, but a car can still drive over that lane. There's a, you know, it, it's really a, an, an improvement over a share, the shared lane markings where the cyclist rides, drives that, or rides down the middle of the road and shares the road with cyclists. There are those that would prefer to be a little bit more closer to the cars and not ride in the door zone essentially. And so the advisory bike lanes all allow that opportunity to be, have a designated lane for bicyclists, but still cars can still travel over as a, whereas in a bike lane that they're not. So it's kind of a little bit of a compromise, but it is being, it is a facility that more and more cities are looking into, especially for the rural roads and, and roads that don't have the right of way to have dedicated bike lanes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think what's more common for that, that kind of roadway in the Bay Area, I believe is a class three bike way where it's like share roads or it's shared with cars. So I'm, I just, we should think higher if we want to recommend new treatments. And I think we're probably a long ways from recommending specific treatments anyways.
And, and the, the plan, you know, you could still, either way, if you wanted to start with the share, the share rows and the, the bike routes first and then transition over, a lot of cities, their, their class three, their class three route, bike routes end up becoming advisory bike lanes. That's happened in, I think, DC recently, where they, you know, wanted something a little bit better than a shared lane, particularly if kids are going to be riding on that street. They want a space dedicated for kids, a little bit more visibility. And then those that just don't like to ride in, you know, share the road and provides that opportunity to. But yeah, sure. They essentially act, like you said, essentially act as a class three.
Okay. Let's see. Another thing that I, that I would like to see on figure four two is Andrew's Road from Rose to University somehow being marked as a, a bike way. It's a safer alternative for cyclists that are going between West Highway nine and like Blossom Hill Road or the Los Gatos Street Trail. Something I take all the time. As a matter of fact, a few years ago, I don't know if you were wrong, when we, Los Gatos, the Los Gatos staff came in and asked about us supporting, taking a little bit of roadway and making a walkway there. And at the time, I expressed, I thought, I thought it was a good idea, but I expressed some concern that it was making the roadway smaller for cyclists. And they said next time they painted there, they put in share rows to humor them. I mean, mainly because I didn't, I didn't feel that it was a complete streets compatible if they were making it slightly less safe for bikes, even though it helped pedestrians quite a bit. And so share rows was an easy thing to warm motors. So I'd like that added, I personally would like that added, whether other people agree or not, but it keeps cyclists away from Highway nine, North Santa Cruz intersection, which is a messy intersection. And those are all the comments I have right now.
Yeah, that's, that's certainly something we can, we can add. So you're, we're looking at Andrews as almost like alternative to Highway nine for the same, essentially the same direction. And you said, you said you wanted to look to see if class two would fit on that street? Was it a bike, bike lanes?
No, it'd have to be class three shared.
Okay, okay.
Because we are, that's, that street is mostly Los Gatos. And Los Gatos staff came and talked to us because they wanted to fix it, including a portion in Montessorino, but it's very narrow and it wasn't even safe for pedestrians. And so there's just, there's really, we know from Los Gatos staff looking at it in detail recently, that there's no more room to do anything there other than paint it.
There's also a sizable grade, right?
That is correct. Yes.
And that, that grade is in Los Gatos, and Los Gatos painted share.
Oh, the shares are there.
They're on the, on the grade.
Oh, okay.
Not on the Montessorino.
Okay. Well, they've been there.
Montessorino, like, yeah.
All right. I, I want to apologize that the share of the painter there, I somehow didn't notice it. So they, they did what they said they were going to do.
But very good point. Any other points or comments?
Nothing right now.
Natalia, any questions?
No, not too bad. I'd have a rather.
Absolutely. Go for it. Start, go through it.
So I, it's my first time seeing the plan, so I have a lot of small remarks, large suggestions, questions. And I would like to start at the beginning of the master plan that states the goals of the plan that we are talking about. And one of the goals, it sounds, it sounds like we could change the phrasing in it. It's the goal number three. If you, if you want to, I have a lot of comments about master plans, so if you want to open it, it's page number six. And the first goal is safety, the second is access, and the third one is connectivity. And it says, develop a network that creates multiple possible routes to destinations. So for me, it sounds like we already have a good route and we want to create more, which I don't see in this plan. Like, in this plan, we are not creating new routes. We are not creating multiple routes to go to a certain destination. The way I see it, we mostly improve existing conditions or add pedestrian, like bike lanes and sidewalks, but we are not including any additional route, route. So I would work on, I would maybe replace the goal number three connectivity. So it sounds better because if you open the master plan and you start going through the goals, it just kind of like, it looks like we already have everything in Montessorino. They don't need to improve anything except for adding multiple routes. So I would replace it. Now, also, I would add a couple more goals. One of them is encourage healthy, active living. And I would explain what I mean. Improve the safety and quality of life for pedestrians by providing safe, convenient, comfortable routes for walking and bicycling. And that, that goal is important to include because if you look at the survey from the bicycle master plan, and the survey is on the page thirty four. And it says that recreation is the main purpose of walking and biking trips in Montessorino. Ninety-three percent of citizens there are walking and seventy-seven percent of biking in recreation purpose. So I think the goal of encourage healthy and active living, it makes sense to put in a plan. And it also looks more, more personal, like it looks like they are doing it for people or for the citizens of Montessorino. Instead of just improving roads, we also keep the health in mind. And since a lot of citizens, they already responded, that ninety-nine percent of walks, they do great. I think it makes sense to add this goal to, to safety plan. And the last goal, which I think is also important, I will know later at the end of my questions, why I think it's important. It's environmental. Reduce possible use. We should add also as a goal. Wait, wait till we will see why it's important to add. It connects to the budget, where we're going to take the budget for these projects. So I'm done with the goals. So to summarize my, my questions about them is to walk on the goal number three connectivity. To include the two more goals, environmental and having the encourage healthy activity is one of the goals. So.
Let me look in my notes quickly. If I may ask a quick question, are these, this is the, we're updating the points.
No, there isn't.
There was, there was.
That was the Los Gatos.
That this one, the B, I suppose, the master plan? Of course, it's all new. I don't think this is real, kind of updated thing.
It's really new, I think. I mean, there was, we were part of the Los Gatos plan.
Right.
I think all the verbiage in here is new, created by KTUA.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, and, yeah, I thought, I thought it was all good. Yes, it's actually on the page seventeen, where they mentioned Los Gatos Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. I started looking, looking at the, oh, we are doing on the Serena Bicycle Plan. And then I realized they're recurring the Los Gatos Bicycle Plan, and they, they took it as an example. And I think Los Gatos Bicycle Plan, Master Plan, they accomplished the great walk, great work. They built the cycle track on Winchester Avenue. And it's really noticeable, and a lot of people use it. And they think this is a great example that we, we can achieve something similar in Montessorino.
Do you mind if I insert a couple comments? One is the original Los Gatos plan was partially funded by Montessorino. And the name on the first version was the Los Gatos Pedestrian Plan. And we also helped pay for some of that work on Winchester. So that is, we were involved in that, and that was partially done by Montessorino.
You should have, you should have put the Montessorino in the name. If you have done so and you want.
Well, they updated it.
That's another project that is separate.
I just want to tell that the accomplishments of that project are very visible. And this is something that would be great to do, such similar project of building a cycle track along the Highway nine. Because in the proposition that we have in this master plan, it says, one second, let me open the. So page number forty four of the master plan, it has a map. And on the Highway nine, the proposition is to install sidewalk on both sides of the road.
I'm sorry, Natalia, what page?
Forty-four of Montessorino Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan. And it has a map on the top of the page.
It is forty-four, isn't it? Isn't that odd?
Yeah, TDF has twenty.
Right. Okay. So it's, it's page twenty-two. Yeah.
I was just looking at the bottom number, at the bottom of the page, it says forty-four, yeah.
So is this one, sorry?
Yes, this one. I'm talking about this one. And the, the proposition is to do, install sidewalk on both sides of. And the the proposition is to do uh install sidewalk on both sides of the road. Uh and the highway nine mark hmm like this is the place where to do it. Uh and uh I honestly, I don't agree with this idea because uh. Uh one side of the highway is very narrow and it already has a sidewalk that's used for bicycles. And it doesn't have much room uh for pedestrian. And another um side of the freeway. It has extra space for bicycles, for pedestrians, and I think instead of focusing on both sides of the freeway, we should focus on just one. And also uh the one side of the freeway that had a pedestrian walk already. Uh it has more streets uh crossing the highway. And the the other side, it doesn't. There is no crossing streets, there is no point to use uh to do any um. Uh any movement on that side. So I think it's better to focus only on one side. Uh and looking at the comments and. Uh that a lot of citizens, they uh said during the uh. Uh I I'll tell you which. So page thirty six. On. Uh the. Yeah, thirty four and thirty six. It's a survey results. So a lot of uh citizens of Monte Serena, they were concerned about. Their drivers going too fast on the highway. Uh and uh the concerns popped in several like places, so it wasn't just one person. Uh and it's a legitimate concern. But I don't think we can, uh it's realistic to reduce the speed on a highway. It's a highway, it's not like in the middle of the city. But what we can do is to separate the bike lane on. Uh from the highway. Uh I think if we like, if we build a si- uh cycle track instead of the bike lane. Uh that would psychologically be more comfortable for pedestrians because. Uh first it goes like pedestrian walk and then cycle track and then there is a road for cars. Uh so it it's so, in my opinion, it solves the problem because. In cycle tracks, you have a lot of obstacles, so the car will not hit the bicycle, the cyclist. And the pedestrians will be separated uh by this. Good structure, good visible structure, and feel more comfortable walking along the along the road. Uh and also we focus on only on one side of the road that has space and that has undeveloped areas. Uh you can see undeveloped areas on the page number thirty seven. Yes, eh uh there are two photos, but yes, this one, this one, that show uh. How it looks like. We don't have a pedestrian walk there. Uh we have a huge amount of space. And we can build them uh cycle track uh. Uh pedestrians will feel more comfortable. So I I'm proposing focusing just on one side of the highway nine, uh instead of trying to do the both sides uh and. I'm proposing to change it to cycle track instead of um I I think it's um by. Class two bike lane, that's what that's what the goal right now is.
I guess I have one comment on that. I mean, I guess would we see. Usage of it or will we continue to see people riding on the other side of the lane? Because it's convenient, shall we say. I know a lot of people that bike out of Los Gatos downtown. Come around Ridge Crest to come on to highway nine. Uh it's kind of a alternative way of going about things.
Sure. Wait, do you have a race can by Joe?
On top of that.
Yes. So sorry, I didn't, I'm sorry, Joe, Joe, yes, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I I just wanted to follow up a little bit on on the cycle track. Um. You know, that with limited space, would a multi-use path be. Acceptable rather than a cycle track and a sidewalk? Cause you know, you're 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 adding additional space by separating the five foot sidewalk and then the cycle tracks typically around twelve feet. Um so you're looking close to twenty foot right away needed for both a sidewalk and a cycle trap. Um but a multi-use path, you can shrink down to about twelve, roughly twelve to fourteen feet. Uh this, I'm just throwing it out there as a as a possible option. Then you have, you know, you have bikes and pets sharing that same space, but it's it's separated from the roadway. Uh just wanted to see some thoughts on that.
Actually, yeah, and I know that part, there is a stretch along highway nine that it's already. Multi-use, right? And so you can walk and ride a bike. So that that actually would make sense. Um. You know, wouldn't take up as much room, but very good point about um spatial stuff, uh.
Sure.
Yes, sir. I just saw the how cycle tracks uh look like and uh. Uh this concrete structure that separates the um. Road for cyclists and the the road. It it just looks very stable. Uh looks like you have an extra protection.
Right.
Uh oh. Instead of just running a line uh on the road.
I think it's important for the commission to remember that. With highway nine being a state route. Anything that happens is subject to approval by Caltrans. We've been working for about five years to try to build a segment of walkway. That's missing from generally grand view up to uh. Not Lexington, but the private road off to the right. I can't think of Constitution, no. Anyway, it's it's about a thousand feet of roadway and. The the state has made it very difficult to get that approved because. Everything that's done in the road has to be done to state standards. And there are requirements. Um. That we don't have yet an approval for the design that was done, had been done and attempts to amend it, so. Uh I think from a practical standpoint, while that. The vision of I understand what Commissioner Natalia said. Um, sounds like a good idea. The chances of it getting approved and the time to get it approved and the cost to. Design and build it may make it unrealistic, so just.
Thank you, uh thank you, Mr. Bunkel. But yeah, so we have to keep in mind the cost, the cost analysis for Monte Serena because we are limited.
So I I I certainly agree with Don, but it's important to keep things like that somehow. Maybe not that that exact thing, but something on the plan so that when. Caltrans eventually redoes highway nine, where we will say, hey, this is in our plan, this is what we want to do, and then we can lobby them at that time.
Right.
That's when that's when it would happen.
And it's blue, we can change, we can change the design. And we have Alex at this race, yes, we'll raise. Alex.
Hi, yeah, thanks. Um I just wanted to give one point of clarification. Um. It may be a little hard to read on the map. Um. The uh figure four two, the the blue line is referring to the existing class two bike lanes and the recommendation is for. A a class four um on on that stretch of road. Um. So. A a cycle track a- as as your um. As was being discussed, um. It it seemed like there is a a misperception that the proposal was for a or the recommendation was a class two. But it's it's actually currently class four. I just want to clear that up briefly. Um, and then moving on to a couple of questions. So if there was support to. Um. Have a a cycle track, but this is a. Different from the Joe, uh from the idea Joe asked about, but if there was support for uh. The cycle track on one side and a sidewalk on the other, uh whi- which side would those fall on? I I don't know if that was said.
I I uh I I think on one side of the highway, it already has a sidewalk.
Uh the the north side, I believe.
Um, yeah, and another one doesn't. And uh so the one that already has a little bit of sidewalk that then abrots. Uh and then it continues uh on. Al- almost uh until Guitar Road. So that gap uh that doesn't have a side sidewalk, that's where the blues. Uh uh maybe.
If I may, if I may make a suggestion, maybe we can put a pin in highway nine and we can go through the rest of the plan. Um and see if there's any other comments, because highway nine is a dumb beast, because we have to deal with Caltrans. And 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 the cost and and time. So I I think that this plan is basically fully respected highway nine. I assume that we can, as time goes, we can come back and look at it and see what makes sense. We can do very, very obviously, yes, and all. Do you have any other comment?
Yes, just the the last comment that I have. Um about all this improvement, so. It it's just an idea, just a possibility, like why not, uh to separate uh these uh projects. Uh the projects about the highway nine because the Caltrans is involved and separating these. Uh and for highway nine, um I looked at the Caltrans uh website, uh they. Have their own plan. It's called, it's called Caltrans District Four Pedestrian Plan for Bay Area. And they in that plan, uh they have Los Gatos start of the road, highway nine marked as. It needs improvement. But on the website, it states that um. Uh there is a question, what's the location and they identified as a need through, sorry. Uh what's this location identified as a need through local public engagement? No. Like, nobody ever reached to them that this location needs any improvement. And the only thing that they have marked there is pedestrian crossing that is not functional because. It doesn't lead to any pedestrian walks. Like, I took uh today, I drove the engine, I took a video and if you want to see. It just goes from one side, that doesn't have pedestrian walk, it doesn't have anything like residential neighborhood. Very narrow road, and it goes to the other side and hits the wall. Like, it doesn't lead to any downtown, it doesn't go anywhere. Um that's the only crossing that highway nine has. And I think if we will propose to Caltrans. To Caltrans to fix the highway nine and include pedestrian walkway and the two bicycle lanes. Uh so they will fund the project, you know, that would be great. And for Dave's neighborhood, we will. Uh find grants uh to fix that neighborhood and the project will cost much less because. Highway nine has a lot of expensive things to fix. Uh and if we will include together with the improvement area around Dave's Elementary School. Then we will not find any money to Dave's Elementary School because everyone will look at the proposal and like, wow. So I'm proposing to separate these two projects and to do different funding for them. Grants from. Dave's Elementary School Neighborhood Improvement and uh try to reach the culture and and propose the. Plan to them. Uh and they looked at all the requirements, they have all the emails of the people in charge of that. Um and they stated that there there was no public input on that project and. And they actually uh they have different different priorities types. Uh first priority, second priority, and low priority. And our role. Serato Los Gatos Road marked as a second priority. So they 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 do consider this project, not as a first priority, there are a lot of things to fix. Uh but I was surprised to see that they marked this specific area. And but. So I here, I'm gonna try to let's do maybe script this plan to to different plans. And try to submit them to cultures because on their website, they look for improvements. Uh I have some printouts where they can specifically say that they plan and they. I identify specific locations and specific bike and pedestrian needs, local based needs. Uh which can be referenced to help scope projects. So they they all look at the project, it's like. So we try, I think we should try to submit to them this project.
Well, thank you for your input. I mean, you've done a lot of research, thank you for that. That's really, you did a deep, deep dive. And yes, we 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 need to deal with highway nine and that is certainly. This this particular plan is just kind of outline what it's going to look like in the future. And so. We've obviously, um and thank you to our consultants for. Um actually, we going through the, taking the recommendations from the previous um Better Streets Commission. And breaking down the projects by short term, long term, and by priority, and also attaching a number. A fiscal amount, uh you know, how much it's gonna cost to those projects, because as you know, here in Monte Serena, we have a limited budget. So we need to do. Things one step at a time, so we can only address one thing at a time, really, and highway nine is its own project. I think it's important that it's incorporated in this plan because this plan is kind of what. Is supposed to be our city's plan, our footprint for the future. But to your point, we have to aggressively continue to. Go for those uh grant options for uh from O V A and and whatever others other sources that we can get. Um, yeah, so. Yeah, yeah, you can certainly go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if we will submit this uh plan as it is to Caltrans. Then they will see that we have a lot of like uh small streets, small intersections, and they will not then accept it. They will dismiss it. And if we will apply to grants, then they will dismiss it because the budget is too high because of the highway and we kind of trying to please. Everything in my plan.
Right.
That's why I proposed to separate them.
Mr. Rememberly, this 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 wouldn't send to Caltrans when we applied for those O V A funds, would it, in that grant proposal?
Material from this plan was. The O V A grant had two major projects, the highway nine gap project. And major safety improvements along Dave's Avenue. Each of those was a million or more.
Right.
Uh and. In the old, and they were extensively described in that O V A grant.
Right. Okay, well, um thank you. Going back, I just wanted to say, thank again, thank you for incorporating the changes. I have one housekeeping. Piece and that's in the law at the very beginning, just take out, you know, in the um. Page one, you know, in the table contents, just remove the um four one. Under recommendations, active transportation toolkit, because you took that out and put it under appendices. Um that's that's just housekeeping. And then to go back and talk about, we talked about highway nine, um to go back and talk about your suggestions. Um as well as your wording suggestions. Um I think that we we you mentioned El Rancho. Keeping that as a as a possibility, I think is a good idea. I think we can all agree on that because this is a plan that we're building up for the future, right? I think your idea about Bruce, um should also be indicated on that. My question is, Bruce is, there's a lot of street parking on Bruce. So I don't know how feasible it is to actually have a pedestrian walkway on there because of the parking on the street. So I'm not sure if that's something that can be done. Um we don't have sidewalks, yes, Mr. Rememberly.
Well, we actually surveyed that neighborhood. They didn't want to lose their parking.
Right.
Um but on the other hand, if a lot of people are using it, we've got to.
Right.
Keep that and keep it in mind and again, just ignore it.
Right. One thing we also, I think, is important for us to remember is that with the new. Housing element and new housing laws, transstate of California, we are no longer required to build parking. So um. You only need to build one spot. So now we are going to, in the future, see more parking park on the street. So we have to be mindful of that when we do make these plans, that just keep that in the back of our minds, that that could potentially happen, especially. In the more congested um parts of of the city. So.
I I was just going to comment that um recently, two properties along Bruce. Between Poppy and San Beniof on the south side developed. And so. It created an opportunity to make an incremental improvement. To match the design that would finish in twenty twenty two for. What's variously called Bruce Avenue Improvements or the Dave's Avenue Neighborhood Improvements. Uh which included Vista, portions of Poppy and Bruce. The cross section for Bruce in that plan. That I believe, as you all can state better than I, is a result of significant neighborhood input. Provides for a new concrete gutter like many streets in Monte Serena have, kind of a rule shape gutter. With five feet of asphalt behind that gutter. The implication is that that's where you tell people to park up on there. So where you would typically have a sidewalk. That's being paved in asphalt. Uh, for vehicular parking along the frontage. I think part of the idea is to open up Bruce, because right now, if you get enough parking, it becomes very difficult to traverse that street. Um, so I'm not sure if the. If you don't want to include something in your recommendations and prescription in the plan. How you would, if that cross section of Bruce is not what you would recommend, that that be. Um, what would I say, indicated in your comments?
Okay, thank you. I mean, I, I don't really see the harm in including it, because it doesn't obligate us to keep it. But I just don't know if the likelihood of, of it being accomplished is, right?
Well, did you say we're actually implementing the cross section of development?
Two lots, the frontages of two lots are installing the new gutter, and behind that gutter, five feet of.
And these are Montesquio properties?
That's correct.
Yeah. I think, um, I mean, honestly, I think it's not, I mean, if the neighborhood didn't want it either, then maybe we should do.
But then, then, I think we did get neighborhood buy-in on that plan. That's my understanding.
So ultimately, over time, it would be nice to see the entire street of Bruce being like that. Is that, is that part of the Bruce project too?
Well, the title gets good. For some reason, it's filed as Dave's Avenue Neighborhood.
Oh, oh.
Improvement projects.
Right, right.
But all the plan itself, it says Bruce Avenue.
Yeah.
So I think they're one in the same. Again, it's Vista with a similar treatment. And Bruce, and then Poppy gets some sidewalks that aren't built along Bruce and Vista.
So we could do like just a little notation, well, future discussion if necessary, right? We could do something like that, kind of make sure that it's noted, like you said.
Sure, good answer. Yes, so, uh. I went to that intersection of Poppy Lane and Bruce Avenue today. So what, what is the raised sidewalk are we talking about? Uh, and the question is, so the. Uh, Poppy Lane, it already has a sidewalk. And the Bruce Lane, there is, as you mentioned, so the car park. So, uh, I don't know if they want the sidewalk on, but so the question is to install the sidewalk on Poppy Lane. And Poppy Lane goes very close to the retirement community. Like, it's a dead, dead end street. There is nothing but retirement community. Um, since I never saw kids walking there, I wasn't there. It's time, so I don't know how difficult this for kids. Do they need a sidewalk there? Uh, because it's like a dead end, uh, um, end of the street. It was, I, I haven't seen any cars today at least. Uh, and also, uh, I noticed the sign on the, uh, retirement, uh, community that said. Private property permit plus, uh, it will, it will, it will bookable at any time. And I'm like, we will start the project close to the community, and they will say, oh, it's noisy for our citizens who live here. And we don't want you at all to pass through our community. Then it's not going to be beneficial, but they will take the permit back. Oh, that's, that's my.
If I can comment to that, I mean, we've kind of talked about that. My kids are at Dave's, they've been at Dave's for years.
My kids are going next year.
It's a great, good community. And actually, the retirement home, the comments I got from them were the citizens of the retirement home. They actually enjoy the kids coming through, the noise, seeing the smiling faces, and kind of, you know, brightens their day almost. Um, so I don't think we are going to be at risk of losing that pass through anytime soon. I don't think we want to also build the sidewalk into that piece of it. I think it's more raising up the street level. To be almost even with the sidewalk in a speed hump type fashion, if you're using the terms correctly, gentlemen. What that way they do is, it would require cars to actually come to a complete stop at the four-way stop sign. Which has kind of been the issue, I think it's been brought to our attention, with, uh, a lot of people rolling through a lot of those stop signs. And making a left-hand turn without stopping even, which obviously endangers pedestrians. So I think that's kind of what this plan is calling for, is, is building in some type of, um, safety element there.
Yeah.
Some of the big construction.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm glad that you had another different impression from retirement community. I hope they will not be against of this project. I walked there, I saw one huge sign that don't pass, don't run, don't bike, just walk along your bike. And then the other sign, and then multiple signs along the road, then they got different impression. And look, they probably don't want a lot of people to, to pass through there.
Right.
At least they're very content with us.
Okay, good. I also wanted to, um, get back to the Andrews connection from, you know, Rose University. And you're concerned about the shareos. I, I don't think there are actually shareos on the top level, right? So there is a possibility to do a, what is it, the edge, kind of with an edling. Kind of situation. I don't know if you really need it. It's pretty wide, but I don't know if you, if you need anything there, but.
I, I think it was practical, it would have came up with Los Gatos planners, were here looking at that.
Yeah, okay. I'm just kind of going through your comments and, um.
I just mainly acknowledge that bicyclists can and should.
Can take in, 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 like a, like a detour, like alternate route of Highway nine.
True.
Yeah.
Seeing horses on that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think that's all of the comments I have, because otherwise it looks, I mean, in my opinion, it looks, it looks great. I mean, planning this stuff out, I mean, I don't know how much of it's going to get done. But I do like the idea of how you broke it down by pricing. And this way, we can have discussions with council and, and understand what the budgetary concerns are, so that we were aligned. And we understand what we can and can't do. That's, that's an important thing. Government works slowly, so it takes, takes time to get these things done.
Yes, also, uh, I, uh, I looked at the pricing mentioned in the plan. And it looks like, you know, all the improvements close to Dave's Elementary School, they're very low budget. So the, they can be fixed first. Uh, that's why I, uh, I thought the, like a good idea to separate them. With the highway.
Well, I think those are.
Um, I, I can scroll down and say where it's sold.
Yeah, they were, yeah, that's prioritizing the short term.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So yeah, there's definitely things that can be done.
Um, also, like, on the, is Kido Road part of Montesquio? Because it doesn't look at like it's part of Montesquio in the plan.
A very small portion of it is.
Like just the entrance to Kido Road.
Yes, and across to Austin Way, so.
Because on the, uh, master plan for bicycle pedestrians. The Kido Road is also included in the, um, and the improvements along that road is also included, uh, in the plan. Uh, like, well, they're in here, right here. The improvements go all along, and they're like.
Now that's, yeah.
I can tell you the.
I mean, I got it, I got it. You're right. Well.
So, uh, if it's not part of Montesquio, maybe we can, uh, delete it from the plan, and then we will reduce the cost.
That's a really good point, is that, but, uh, that's part of Saratoga.
Forty-five.
That's actually part of Saratoga, from Austin Way to the beach now. But Twin Creeks comes up. Yeah, Saratoga starts where that creek runs. That's the dividing line.
It has like, uh, oh, yes, on Bridge Forty, Forty-five. Yes, yes, on the top, you see the, uh, like, kind of like the.
I see.
And then the, the Kido Road goes a little bit off the city limits, but we still have like.
Commissioner, uh, Commissioner, Bob had, uh, an answer to that.
Yeah, I can attest to. So when we were talking about this originally, one of the things that came up was Montesquio is kind of separated a little bit along Kido. In order to make it continuous for a bike route, one would be able to connect it with that green line, essentially.
To Big Now. So yes, so Big Now is, is a part of, yeah. So then that would require working with Saratoga. Okay.
And well, if I can add on that, like, where the end of Big Now is, Los Gatos plan shows, uh, proposal going north.
Further, okay.
So that's a very significant.
Oh, good, okay, okay.
Simply should clarify for the commissioner that this isn't a plan that we're going to just say, hey, we need this money to do this. It would just ideas, and they'll each be tackled individually, I believe. Um, by putting together a very detailed, specific plan. Um, and it'd be a miracle to get one of these done per year. Um, so it's, that taking something off to save money doesn't really make sense. We want to keep it, keep things on there, so that if, um, Los Gatos says, oh, somebody should fix Kido Road. That we can lobby and say, hey, it's on our plan. We'll help you ask, uh, some government agency for money.
One of the goals that's stated at the beginning of the plan, and one of the, it said, uh, goal number five. It's, I went into all, all the details. It says, uh, uh, visibility, develop projects that are implementable and cost-effective. To, to, to get constructed in a realistic manner. So I tried to make it as realistic as possible. Uh, if it's, um, if it's like too complicated to fix Kido, because we need to partner with Saratoga. Uh, we can probably exclude it. That's where my, my thinking is coming from.
Yeah, so it makes, makes sense.
Well, and, and this is, this is a blueprint for all of the things that we have identified that we can do over the next twenty years. But not necessarily all of them are going to be done or need to be done. So it's just, this is where we've identified the needs and how they can be accomplished. Am I right in saying that?
I agree.
Okay. Okay, then our, our consultants, um, are you, uh, clear on? What, any changes we're doing, other than just keeping El Rancho in and making a notation about Bruce? As a potential future pedestrian project?
Somehow identify Andrews.
And identify Andrews as a potential project. Andrews between, uh, Rose Avenue and, well, it's really.
University.
And the university, but university isn't even our jurisdiction. So it's really, honestly, it's, it's, it's. Rose to, gosh, that's a bad street.
There's, but there's other examples.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, I'm not sure how to label that, because I'm not actually recommending a specific project, but, um. It's a bicycling route in the city.
But it's come up before, when I was last on Better Streets Commission, as, as a, as an issue, right? Because it, because it's that great.
Yeah.
And like, how do we, you know, protect folks? And so, and that impacts people who live in Montesquio now. So it is something that should be, again, noted maybe as Bruce. As a future identifiable piece. Um, and then I think as far as, uh, rephrasing any of the, uh. Natalia, Natalia had some suggestions on phrasing any of the goals. Have you, uh, did you want to have a discussion about that? Or, or I think there was, um, just some clarification, maybe?
Well, the first one, I had a potential idea.
Okay.
We took the battle of the network. But we just changed that to identify a network, would that solve the problem?
That would be, that would actually be more accurate.
And, and then.
Yes, uh, that, that, uh.
Okay.
That's a small change, but, you know, for people who, who look at the goals, it said, develop a network. It's like we're building, we're trying to build a lot of roads. And then it says multiple possible routes, which is just showing that they're trying to build multiple. But actually, they're trying to fix like, uh, at, at least, uh, when I looked at the plan, it was focused on Highway nine. As the main, because that goes through the whole city, uh, and everyone uses this road. And it's the only road. It would not like create another one, because there are hills and there are a lot of private properties. So the plan is focused on one road at that neighborhood. And then Dave's Elementary, they're also not creating anything new. We are fixing, uh, what, what they have.
So, so I like the, uh, identify a network that maybe, that creates instead of multiple, multiple possible routes. Just develop and, uh, identify a network that creates safe routes to multiple destinations.
That's good.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
How about two other goals?
I'm like zero over two goals.
The, uh, let's see, encourage an active lifestyle.
And so encourage, the name of the goal is encourage healthy, active living, uh, uh, active living, okay.
Yeah, just healthy, active living.
And the description is improve the safety and quality of life for residents by providing safe. Convenient, comfortable routes for walking and bicycling.
Okay.
I like it.
Because if, if, uh, I came with this idea, uh, after I read the survey for the plan. That a lot of people, they work, uh, they, they use routes for recreational purposes in Montesquio. They don't use it to commute for work. We all drive, um, it, it's mostly recreational. When you go out, you, you try to get.
We'll have that in the recording, so we'll definitely. Okay, okay, then we can get, we can get it to our consultants to include, okay.
She may be able to submit it.
I've spent like so much time on this.
Right, just believe, right. And then your final one was environmental.
And the final one, our environmental, this use fossil fuel use. It's because Caltrains, uh, they, uh, prioritize environmental projects. They're looking for environmental projects, uh, during, to spend money on. And if we, yes, if we present. Environmental and encourage health and active media and put it in the goals, then it would. I hope it will, it will, it will give more attention, because they're looking for this specific project. Where they can, uh, build pedestrian walkways and bicycle lanes, uh, along the highways. And Highway nine is a highway, and.
Yeah, do you have the wording for that? What, what, do you have it?
Yes, in, in, environmental, we feel it's fossil fuel use.
Okay, so that's just, yeah.
The, but that goal is, uh, if we're going to submit it to Caltrains.
Sure.
If we will, um, give it.
Well, I think that goal is frankly consistent with everything that California is doing these days. So it, it makes sense to include it, because that's what.
Uh, I think it's always important to modify, because it's a broad base that you see in the master plan. And, uh, if the wording is not, like, perfect, then.
No, it's really small wishes. That's great. I really, yeah, I think we, I think we all agree with it, and I think.
One thing we might want to consider is, is include having that text, but also adding, um. I believe it's total miles driven or.
B, B M T.
B M T, because, because that's how projects are judged.
So B M T, yeah.
B M T and what she said.
Yeah.
Which it's really the same.
Well, it's, yeah, it's, it's environmental, it's reducing, it's reducing vehicle miles travels.
Yeah, that's it, that's it.
But that's the term that, that you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. So that's why I'm saying the wording is important. Uh, that's what my impression of the plan, when I was reading the, that's my impression of the plan. From all the, you know, input from residents and comments.
Okay, well, thank you. My goodness. Well, have, have this, any other comments or questions, and from our consultants? Do you have any further questions or comments? Are you clear about what, what minor changes we want made?
Yeah, I, I, I think if we can get those, the, the goals memorialized, so that we can add them to the draft plan. Um, I was trying to take, I was trying to write as fast as I could, but there was, there's still this dialogue going, some good idea. So if you can, if you can get that over to Dawn and then have it over, send it over to us, we can add those. And I do believe we've got the notes for the, uh, additional three projects in, in there. Um, but if we can get, uh, kind of a final, final set of notes from you guys, um, we can, we can make some of those changes. That should be no problem.
All right. Well, thank you very much for being here. Really appreciate it. It's been super helpful. We have any other things we'd like to add, or, or we're, we can move on. All right. Thank you both very much.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night. Okay, moving on, future agenda items. Does anybody have an agenda item that would like to see on the future agenda?
Let's keep your agenda items on our agenda.
There's future agenda items on our agenda. I figured I'd leave it there, because you guys want to discuss, and we don't want to put anything, because you guys will have your schedule. I figured I'd leave it there because you guys want to discuss and you don't want to put anything, because you guys will have your central.
Yes, I have one meeting.
Go ahead.
I feel like we should re- review the Bruce plan for the new commissioners.
Okay. Yes.
Dawn, does that seem reasonable?
At the commission's wish.
But, um, did you have one too?
How would you envision that occurring? I, I provided the plans in a previous packet. I don't know if that's constructive, if there's another way to.
But that was a packet with, with, before the redo commissioners.
Helpful because now the, the, it might be helpful for the liaison to see it as well. So I think that could be, I think that's okay. Yeah. Did you, did you have something you wanted to be having at the next meeting?
Sure. Uh, so I was, uh, looking on the report for the future agenda items. One second, let me collect my thoughts.
Sure, and my notes too. Then while, while you're doing that, I'll just, I, I've already spoke to, um. Mr. Remerly, but the secret fix information, I think on a quarterly basis, maybe. It's a basic overview of what's been reported, what's been fixed and the speed of it is done.
People would much rather complain directly as. It's been a busy winter.
I've used it. When I see, you know, something, the thing or, yeah.
I used it, it reminded me, we used to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I remember it was a big deal getting it going, so.
It says, uh, that you, um, I think that it was, uh.
Oh, this is, this is, these are the minutes.
Yes, the minutes.
Yeah.
It says, here's the agenda items. Oh, oh, I think you proposed the crosswalk for the bus stop.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was mentioned. That'll be on our next, uh, that'll, that'll be coming up. I imagine we'll have some sort of study done on that.
Excuse me, sure. Should that be on the bike plan?
That's what my question is because it should be on the bike plan. Well, and it's a couple blocks from Dave's Elementary and it's the only bus stop, as he described it. It's the only bus stop that, uh, that's there. And if we do really need a crosswalk, that's going to, that has to be there. I actually, uh, to be honest, I haven't drove there to see what's the speed on the road compared to all other, like, um, like Dave.
Well, I think, I think at this point, I think that's a good point. There is, we need to figure out the jurisdiction because it was part of the bigger plan with Los Gatos. And I know I've talked to them about this a couple of years ago, so maybe we can come back with just kind of an overview of what's happening with that. Um, I can help you with that.
Thank you.
I will, I will get, I'll get some information and then we can discuss how to report with that if it does. We'll, and we'll, so we'll put that on a future agenda and we'll all get some research done, right, please. Anyone else?
Um, if I can disagree, I think keeping it on the plan, I'm going to make sure that if all these chairs change. We'll remember that that's something we want to talk about when Los Gatos does the complete streets project, which will be, will be verbal.
Okay, um, so then, okay, our, our consultants are gone, but let's put that in the, um, notation to them. As a notation for crosswalk at Vinland on, in Winchester. Perfect. Yeah, that one does require multiple jurisdictions. Yeah. Okay, all right. Well, if that's everything, then I will now adjourn the meeting of the Better Streets Commission. Thank you for everyone. Thank you, Amber, for attending.